Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice the schedule was set to and published in the Asbury Park Press. It was also set to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. That notice was also posted on the Board of Borough Hall. And has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of notices and has been available to the public. And is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice is also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information. And according to the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the Board Secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call please Cindy.
Mr. Borderlon?
Here.
Mrs. Bush. Mrs. Koch?
Here.
Mr. Newell?
Here.
Mr. Peolo?
Here.
Mr. Rolf?
Here.
Mr. Nicka? Ms. Murray? Mrs. D'Angelo? Mr. Burkhardt?
Here.
And Mr. Leader?
Here. Could you please join me in a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Well, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a very short agenda this evening. We have a new ordinance to review related to cannabis. And a short list of administrative items, and then we will do public comment. So with regard to the, the new ordinance. You know, I would just say generally that the planning board should recall. That when ordinances related to land use issues are adopted. That those ordinances are sent to the planning board for review. And comment by the planning board members with regard to conformity to the master plan. Doug, anything further that you can advise the board before we engage in discussion about the cannabis ordinance?
It's very limited. Ours is not an up or down or a preclusion on the ordinance. It's just whether or not. It is consistent with the master plan and development regulations. If it is, we report that to Mayor and Council. If it is not, we advise as to where it is inconsistent with the master plan and development regulations. And we can recommend how to make it consistent. All that does, if it is inconsistent, is heighten the vote requirement for everybody to approve the ordinance.
Yeah, and importantly, this is not the place for the politics of the ordinance. That's handled like council. You know, our role is, is very limited. So with that being said, from Higher and Grow, we have John Gar tonight. John, why don't you give us a short summary of not only the ordinance that's been proposed in Fairhaven? But maybe your understanding of what's happening around the state in relation to the, the changes in the regulation and the legalization of cannabis?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. John Barry from Higher, Grow and Associates filling in for Lena tonight. The, um. The ordinance that we have before us, as was, was stated in Todd's preamble. Is to set forth prohibition of cannabis in the borough. The state had held a referendum in November at the election. And the legalization of adult-use cannabis essentially, you know, sale to adults 21 and over was, was voted. Favorably upon by the citizens of the state. And in February, legislation was signed into law by the governor. Establishing six different classes of license. A number of rules related to the municipality's role in the licensing process, the land use implications. Which is really what we're concerned about with the board. One of the components that was included in that legislation was 180-day time period. During which municipalities have to, to act essentially to either permit or prohibit. One or more of the classes of license within the borders of the town. The failure to act during that timeframe would basically result in a default permission of some of the classes of license in industrial zones, other classes in, in commercial retail zones. So as the borough is doing right now, and many other towns throughout the state, other places that I've been involved with. We're kind of down to the wire in terms of getting an ordinance adopted. Towns are either acting to prohibit or permit. The prohibition is fairly straightforward. There, there are six different classes of license, as I mentioned. There's the cultivation, growing of cannabis, manufacturing, so taking plants, making them into consumable products. Distribution and wholesaling, those are more business-to-business transfer type of, of enterprises. And then a retailer, so a storefront kind of sales to, to an end user. And then delivery service, which would take, pick up the cannabis products from a retailer, deliver them to an end user. The statute does specify that towns can permit or prohibit any of those. It gives fairly broad latitude to the, um. The ways in which towns can regulate. So outright prohibition is certainly an option and is what the borough is pursuing here. The one caveat is that the law allows for people to order delivery from outside of town. So the, you can't prohibit a delivery service from coming to town and dropping something off at someone's home or a business or whatever. But you can prohibit the operation of that business, the physical, the dispatch center, or whatever you want to call it, the, um. The place of business associated with that within the borders. So for instance, if, if Red Bank were to permit a delivery service, somebody in Fairhaven could order a product from the delivery service in Red Bank. Fairhaven couldn't stop that from being delivered. Other than that, the, the ordinance deals with a few, uh, kind of administrative matters related to penalties for underage use and consumption possession. I, I, I don't, I'm not familiar specifically with the borough's liquor regulations, but I imagine it's fairly similar in terms of the penalties for underage possession of alcohol. And, and public consumption as well. So, um. As, as to the consistency with the master plan. As I've generally been advising towns that are prohibiting it, nothing, nothing's changing here. So the master plan, zoning ordinance have not contemplated this use as something to be permitted in the past. It's been illegal for years, since, since it's been illegal. And what we're seeing here is essentially us maintaining the status quo. We have to take action because the state law says that doing nothing really isn't an option. So we're going through this ordinance process essentially to maintain the status quo. So I don't really see any implications as they relate to the master plan or the, the broader zoning ordinance in the borough. Happy to answer any questions about it and go into other detail if anybody likes.
John, that was a fantastic summary. Any board members have any question or engage in some discussion about this? Anybody concerned at all that we have any conflict between the proposed ordinance and the master plan?
I, one thing comes to mind on, on your first question, Todd. So we have, if, in the example where Red Bank has a delivery service, but we have possession. Laws here. How does, how does the delivery person? How do those two things exist in parallel? Like, can the delivery person like claim to be a part of a delivery service from another municipality and that absolves them of the possession problems? Just kind of curious how that's worked out.
So the, uh. The possession is exclusively for underaged individuals. So, um, you know, similar to an underage possession of alcohol, it's that, that same sort of, of violation. The state law essentially permits possession and consumption for adults regardless. You know, where the borough really only has the ability to opt out of the, the land use side of things. It can't choose to criminalize possession contravening the state law.
Makes sense. Thank you.
But David, at your house, you can establish whatever rules you want.
I may speak to one of the other questions that you asked.
Yeah, please Doug.
Yeah, um. Going back to what, what we're seeing in other municipalities, I, I don't have the, I'm sure I don't have the breadth of experience that Sean has. But in the limited experience that I do have. I do know that many municipalities. Realizing that if they don't take action within 180 days, they basically are precluded from taking action. But if they do take action to prohibit or preclude, they can always come back and revisit it. I think what's interesting to note is that two groups. The New Jersey State League of Municipalities and the New Jersey Institute of Local Government Attorneys. These are two nonprofit organizations that provide counsel to municipalities with regard to laws. Both of those entities have come out and said, look, abundance of caution. You really haven't ironed out all the details as to where you might want these facilities to be, what types of facilities you want to have. Whether or not you want to have a complete preclusion, et cetera, et cetera. They're counseling that at this point in time, within the, within the window, you have to have your ordinance. Either prohibiting or not prohibiting by August, it's August 21st. They're recommending have a prohibition. You can always come back and revisit this. You can undo it if you didn't do it for a period of time, but if you have a prohibition. You can always come back and revisit it. And many municipalities, the discussion that I'm hearing from governing bodies is. We don't necessarily need to be the first group out of the box. You know, we don't know what the traffic for these types of things going to be. Is it going to be like a dentist's office or is it going to be like a Dunkin' Donuts? We don't know what it's going to generate. We don't know what traffic it's going to generate. We don't know if we're going to need parking lots. We don't know a variety of things. Why don't we see how other municipalities deal with this? And let's see if we can learn from what they do as opposed to being the first entity out of the box of having this. As to what I'm seeing.
Very good.
Does anybody have any idea if Red Bank is, is, is going with that with prohibiting first or is Rumsen going with prohibitive first? Or they, like, what are, what are the rest of the towns doing?
I think all of our neighboring towns are following the same path as we are. They're prohibiting all, all six levels.
Interesting.
Hey, Betsy, I, I know that there was some discussion and at least a draft ordinance put together years ago about this. Was that ever, was that ever adopted or was that just a discussion at another time?
It, it was adopted, but once, um. The vote was taken in November and signed into law, it, it somehow negated it, so we had to go back and redo the process.
Right, right.
And that is, you know, further support for the idea that we are maintaining the status quo because the borough had proactively taken that stance already.
Right.
It does look like, at, at least on a Google search, I don't, I don't do any work in Red Bank right now, but it does look like Red Bank may be permitting. One or more classes. It sounds like they're, they have an ordinance set to be introduced at council tomorrow, in fact. So. And, and is it treated like liquor licenses to the local municipalities? Or is, how is it, do we know how that's treated? Like if we want to be forward-thinking and what we could possibly do in the future? To Doug's point about a lot of uncertainty. There is a state-level commission, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, that has been meeting over the last four or so months. That's tasked with coming out with rules. For whatever reason, the legislation chose to make the period of time during which they can make the rules and the period of time for municipalities to act, the same period of time. So essentially, all these towns have to act before this body has come out with, with the final rules on how things are going to operate. The licenses, it appears, they'll be relatively limited at first. They'll be issued at the state level. Municipalities will be sent license applications for their review and approval. If a town doesn't permit it, then you can't get a license to do it there. And municipalities have the ability to regulate the number of licenses within their borders. You can choose to say, we'll take whatever the state gives us. You can choose to say, we'll allow one of each class. You know, there's a, the, like I said, the legislation gives towns pretty broad latitude to, to choose their paths, at least for now. So at some point, you know, as the market matures, it may become similar to liquor licenses. Right now, it's going to be controlled more centrally from, at the state level, I think. Thank you.
I think that's really interesting, Betsy. You know, I, I think about liquor licenses specifically, and I know there's a lot of concern about the way that sort of today's reality lays on top of. Whatever the, you know, whether it's 50 years ago or whatever, the system was put in place. Some towns wind up with very few, others wind up with a lot. But as we move to more of a service-based economy, there's people sort of frustrated with, you know, the inability to bring more liquor licenses into towns.
Right.
It's a very interesting thought. I hadn't considered it until John so, so thoughtfully put together all that information. But, um, you know, it'll be interesting to see the way it plays out. Clearly, there's a short-term risk associated with this not being managed or, or run in a way that is consistent with what our town would expect.
I think it just makes sense because you, should you wish to change it, you always have the opportunity to adjust or modify the ordinance. But it has to be, you have to take the first step within the 180 days.
Right. Great. So does anybody have anything at all that they want Mr. Kovats to put together in his letter beyond that the planning board? Thoughtfully considered the issue and found the ordinance to be within the spirit of the master plan?
I think in particular, the master plan mentions so much that we're a family-centered town. So I think perhaps mentioning something about that might, I, I don't know if it's needed, but it might kind of reinforce the connection to the master plan. And that's what I'm thinking because that's our purview is the master plan.
I particularly like John's comment about maintaining the status quo. And, and the fact is that cannabis is not mentioned within the master plan. And we had an ordinance prior to the referendum in November. And so I think this being consistent with that is also worth mentioning. Great. Okay, uh, Fred, you got some administrative?
Yes, let, let, let's begin. So the, the first item on the, on the administrative agenda is the approval of the June minutes. Which were previously distributed to, to the entire board. I, I would just ask if there's, if, if the board has any comments or questions on the minutes as distributed? And if not, we can move to approve the minutes from, from the prior meeting.
No comments.
Good. So I'll make a motion to approve the June 2021 minutes.
I second.
Mr. Borderlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Newell can't vote on it. Mr. Peolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Okay, um, the second item is the approval of the resolution of granting the minor subdivision approval to Capitol Home Builders on 32 Fifth Street. And so if there are no comments or, or further. Uh, or, or further questions on that, we can, we can also move to approve that resolution.
I just have a quick comment. I wanted to thank Doug. It's such good work. When you look through how he is able to capture all of, you know, our comments in a sense on the fly. And put them into written form so well. I just wanted to say good job. That's it.
Agreed.
I'm sorry.
So I will, I, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second it.
Mr. Borderlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Peolo?
Yes.
And Mr. Burkhardt?
Yes.
I think Todd also has a vote.
Sorry. Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Sorry.
So before moving on to in-person meetings, I would like to engage in some discussion. Mainly Betsy, because I, I want to see whether or not, I, I want to see what the other planning board members think. But I, I, I want to make reference to the last few subdivisions that were done. And I, every time I see a subdivision, I'm amazed that we still have subdivided, subdividable lots in Fairhaven. It is truly amazing to me and, and not, not with variances, that those are always capable of being presented. But fully conforming subdivivable lots. The rules are so favorable to subdividing a fully conforming lot in the MLUL. They don't even need to give regular notice, right? So what, what occurs to me, Betsy, that I wanted to bring to your attention is that in the last few. We've asked the builders to do some things to help make sure that the eventual development is consistent with the expectations. And it is frustrating to me where one of them, and I won't mention the project, but one of them in particular has gotten a lot of attention recently. And it is so troubling, first of all, that residents don't understand. That there's limits to what the planning board can do by way of conditioning a fully conforming subdivision. But it is further frustrating that so much of what we would like to see could be codified and just hasn't been. And, and I know that I probably speak too much on this subject, but right now, I want to speak to it with the other board members. Because I'm interested in knowing whether or not any other board members have seen that and support the idea of trying to tighten up some of these rules. Where really, we're only getting some of these conditions now. You know, when the developers are good enough to agree to, to include those conditions. And further, when, when we know to ask for them. And we don't always, and it's not always consistent or complete.
Todd, I'm glad you brought that up. I have a lot of concerns about lot size. I mean, I know so many of these recent, you know, houses that have been brought in. In a sense, there's only so much we, we can do because as you noted, they're conforming. But when you actually look at the construction, when you look at what's on the lot, the houses are really close together. So, and, and I think it kind of goes against, you know, what the master plan is looking for with a little bit more spacious lot. So again, a good job of bringing that up.
Well, I, I'll, I'll tail on that, David, by saying that I think that a lot of times what happens is that within our zones, we have certain minimum standards. But we have a town that's been developed over an awful long time. And so, um, you know, for example, if there's a 25-foot setback from the street that's required throughout the zone. That's the minimum that the new home needs to conform to. However, if you're building it in an old neighborhood with a prevailing setback is 40 or 50. Then that house is going to be jutting forward. There is a very easy fix for that one, which is a minimum setback and a prevailing setback requirement. Such that the new home needs to conform to the ones around it so that we do not allow that to happen. Side yards, my, my comment would be that sometimes similarly, homes would be built with greater setbacks than, than we, than we permit. But also the size of the structures are so much larger because a lot of the older structures are smaller than what's permitted. And these new structures that are being built, in, in fairness to the, to the residents that buy them and the developers that develop them. Are maximizing within the limits of what we say are reasonable, but that is to the eye, much more significant than what had been there before. And then the other thing is the height. You know, these height issues exist everywhere. And I have chased a few down and, and just been, just completely disgusted to find out. That some of these changes in, in height of the new home versus the old, of the new lot to what the old configuration was and, and the old drainage pattern, et cetera, is permitted. I'm sorry, I did not mean to dominate this, but, but Dave, that's, that's what I'm seeing in terms of those changes. I think that's part of what you're referencing when, when you make your comment.
You know, I think everybody's seeing what you're seeing. And I think it's a good point that while these homes are conforming, the homes they're replacing were a lot smaller. So everything looks bigger, denser, a lot more massive on the same piece of property or on a conforming piece of property. So what would you suggest? Do you, do you think we need to go back and review? Some of these setbacks? You know, and, and talk about what is the prevailing versus what's permitted?
So, you know, from, from my perspective, habitable floor area is number one. Because I think that the way that our ordinances are currently being interpreted, we're not regulating the entirety of the spaces and structures. So they look bigger because they measure bigger, but they don't technically measure in excess of the limits. I, I think that it's important throughout this discussion that we keep in mind the rights of private property owners. I think that people, you know, this is a fair amount of Republicans in this town, but a, a lot of people really do appreciate and respect. What they want to do on their own property. But as soon as it's happening next door, down the street, they feel very differently and the standard should be the same. So I am sensitive to restricting beyond, you know, what's reasonable. A 50-foot lot, for example, there's only so much room to build. So when you think about side yard setbacks on that size lot, you know, it's hard to imagine you could constrain that further. And the, and that the detriment would not outweigh the benefit of doing so. Because designing a home in the remaining 25-foot width or 30-foot width, whatever you left with, is difficult as it is. So, but, but I think, look, I, I think first floor elevation not being more than 36 inches above the grade. Or it requires a variance, in which case we can deal with steep slopes and unique lot configurations, but that the prevailing rule will be 36 inches above. Crown of the road, which is my best measurement of what it should be because I hate whatever we're using, which is the existing grade. Second would be the prevailing front yard setback rule, which would limit a house from sticking out. There's one in particular on River Road that was built 15 years ago that will never look right because it juts out 20 feet beyond everything else. And then I think we have to get into habitable floor area and actually start. Regulating the size of the overall structures, which, which actually is something I'm already in the, in the middle of getting going. But that's the continuation of a long-running discussion.
Well, we had a committee, we had a subcommittee 18 months ago. But we, we kind of went into hibernation for various reasons. Airshare housing contributed, the pandemic contributed, and we've talked about revising that committee.
Yeah, so I, I think that's going to happen, Betsy, based on some of the offline discussions I've had as recently as today. I think though, that the purpose of this, this. This interjection was some of the other things that we're dealing with that will not be resolved through that habitable floor area issue. And also frankly, some things that we've known about for some time that was on the, oh, and we should also finally get that taken care of list. Does anybody have anything beyond perhaps revisiting the setbacks? I mentioned prevailing front yard because the setbacks, it's not about the standard, it's about how it fits in the existing neighborhood. And the first floor height regulation. Does anybody have any other thoughts as they see these subdivisions or they've seen some of the conditions that we've had developers agree to that they think should be codified?
I think. We need to talk about measure, where do we measure the height from existing grade? Center of the street? That's been proposed. So I think that needs to be clarified.
If we set the first floor elevation limitation at 36 inches, you would do a few things. The first thing you would do is you would restrict the ability to put that 49% basement out and put full-size windows in. Which encourage, isn't, it basically gives you a full living level. But then everything that follows, Betsy, would be fixed. Because your measurement of height would then be no more than 36 from grade and then you go up from there. I, so I think that that problem would solve, would be solved with the first floor limitation.
I think perhaps we might want to revisit some of the requirements for plantings. You know, do we want to, and perhaps get like the shade tree in? Do we want to get some kind of, you know, hard requirement insofar as number, size, and species of tree? Or, and other greenery?
I, I was going to suggest that as well as a representative of the Shade Tree Commission. I think that the, uh, the tree ordinance does not have enough teeth. When new construction, uh, comes in and basically kind of clear cuts. Mature trees that may meet the definition of 10 inches circumference or, or I'm sorry, diameter or, or less. So I think there's an opportunity to kind of be a little more precise. I know, I know that the arborist, Bill Brooks. Um, I know I know that the arborist, Bill Brooks, um suggests that we look at the Rumsen tree ordinance. As an example, um but that's, you know, that could be something you want to add, Todd.
But let me ask for clarification. Are you suggesting more teeth in terms of replacement? Or are you suggesting a supplemental requirement that when people do construction, they just be required to add trees?
Well, there's there's good like, there's good like um replacement rules, but there's there's not enough. I, in my opinion, fines to the builders uh when they break those rules. Uh, so I feel as if some some of the development, they don't take it seriously. Um, and I'm I'm. Knew it reading through the ordinances, but it just doesn't seem like the actual financial penalties are are. Uh, are really all that stringent, so it might be something we add some zeros to it and you know, that's a. Wow, good for the uh good for the borough, I think.
You know, in my experience, there's no follow up whatsoever. Uh, I think that when builders get on the radar of the the borough, uh, they might get needled on. But um I I know that I've taken some trees down and had discussions with Bill about what I was going to do. Um, but no one's ever stopped back and asked about it. Uh, maybe they're driving by observing that it's done and just checking it off the list. Um, I I think there's a lot there. I I think the danger in opening up these these issues that sometimes we put too much on the table and don't get enough done. Um, I I think it's important that we be mindful of that with regard to the tree ordinance because that was years in the making. Um, so I would hate to fiddle with something that would cause a whole bunch of fixable problems to not get fixed. But I I think that that's, I think that that's a very good point because these trees take an awful long time to mature. Start planting them now, nothing's going to get better anytime soon.
I think David's point to uh kind of protecting existing trees on the property is particularly important because I know. In my neighborhood, um, uh, River Road in Hans, there were some recent developments where they took out some mature trees that I'm not sure they had to. I think they could have easily built around the trees. So and I think that's one of the points that David, am I right, David, to speak? Uh, I think that's one of the points you were getting at, correct?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, sometimes that. Sometimes the there's, you know, developers that tend to. They they tend to care more about, you know, the the preserving the trees that are existing and certainly on. Um, you know, Hans, there's there's patchwork canopy there, you know what I mean? And it's uh, I I think that we actually just, Shade Tree just had a finished up a tree giveaway initiative. And Hans was the the winner of the of the tree that we're going to give away because. You know, the 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 resident offered a very compelling um. Reason in that, you know, the development on the street uh took away the canopy. And you can kind of, if you look a block further down, there's beautiful, you know, eighty feet tall trees, but there's nothing in the previous block, so. You know, it's um, I think that there's a lot of momentum when it comes to the. Um, you know, preserving the the canopy trees and the shade trees. So I think anything that could be codified, I think would be, I I I think there'd be a lot of support for that.
I I don't know if I've mentioned this before, but I grew up on Rumsen Road and at one point I I remember it distinctly, somebody knocked on the door. And they were from the Shade Tree Commission or whatever incarnation was in Rumsen at the time. And they asked whether or not they could plant trees in the front of our house outside of our hedges. My father said, sure thing, and I drive by them today. And they are full, big and mature, and that is a forty year project. Um, you know, you don't, you don't do that overnight, but I think about that all the time when I think about this. I mean, if our kids want trees, then we better plant them now. Um.
So Todd, you you've told me that story before in the past and that's kind of like the inspiration for the tree giveaway. We wanted to just try it first because, you know, there's there's budget implications and, you know, Shade Tree is not very well capitalized, but you know, you can. You know, you can often count on things like the community appeal to give us a few thousand dollars. Um, and that buys a few trees. It's not going to line Rumsen Road, you know, uh, but it. Uh, but then you have to, then we were thinking about how do we do this, you know, we wanted to try. Um, to prioritize private trees uh as opposed to street trees in the right way. Because that then there's a maintenance kind of debate and we don't want to burden the D P W with uh with more tree work, so. Um, you know, the the residents who offered to, you know, take a private tree. That would then ultimately contribute to the canopy down the road, but they're on the hook to maintain it, so that's that's kind of. Uh, the first iteration of it, you know, I we gave, we're giving away one tree this year, I'd love to give away five next year. And so that's that's kind of what we're trying to do is to hopefully, you know, have that story told again. That, hey, we 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 answered an ad for the Shade Trees Tree Giveaway and here are these beautiful trees down this particular block and street and. In town and it's and they're fifty feet tall now, but so hopefully we can continue with that.
So David, when I was doing my landscaping recently and was out at Teal's picking up my material, I mean, for a hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty dollars. You know, you could get a pretty substantial tree. The issue is delivery and 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 planting, but you know, what? What is the cost of a tree that the Shade Tree Commission would look to install based on your price and power or whatever else?
You know, I think I I don't want to say specifically, but I would give it a range of like three to four hundred dollars. You know, I think that we're trying to do something that's that's significant. Um, we're operating within. Operating within a but, sorry.
Installed at that number?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, we have, we have a little more than a thousand dollars to work with. And so the next step is now that we've selected a winner for our tree giveaway, we're going with Bill Brooks next week. And to pursue this right tree, right place type of mantra, which will dictate. You know, wh- what type of tree is best suited for this particular location? So there is, there is, you know, kind of a subjective part to it that would also impact price. Um. You know, that, you know, we're hoping to do this as economically as possible and eliminate. Uh, any cost in the future of maintaining that tree. Um, but you know, if we can expect, I don't know, fifteen hundred dollars a year in community appeal, hopefully that's enough for three trees. Um, that and then you could do a a funding drive as well if this if this gets any more momentum, so. It's, we're we're kind of feeling our way through this. We have a lot of new people on the Shade Tree Commission that's uh that we're trying to be a little more proactive about planting trees. Um, because I think like the pendulum swung uh pretty far uh prior to my time on the board or on the commission.
I I think that when developers are developing these new homes, they're looking to capture the new home look. I think the new home look does not involve a lot of old trees. While they might be nice, they're off center, they don't, they they don't really allow the house to show. And and I think to an extent the private property rights need to be considered. However, if somebody were charged, you know, a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars to take down a big tree. Wasn't obligated to replant them on the lot, but rather contributed to a fund. I got to tell you, a thousand dollars, I mean, we can certainly do a lot better than that. And I know that generating fees, you know, or generating, you know, budgets through attacking on additional fees is a little sensitive. Uh, but if you said to me as a developer, you know, you can take down those eight trees, but you need to contribute eight times five hundred. To a fund and then Fairhaven uh Shade Tree Commission is going to go find good places to put them. Granted, not on your lot, so you can do what you want here. You know, that might be a reasonable trade off to think about.
Almost like a sidewalk fund kind of contribution, yeah.
Yeah, exactly like that, yeah.
I know, it's a good idea. I I know that, you know, like eight times five hundred is not what the math is, it's much less than that. So it's it's like eight trees for, you know, grand sum of like a hundred and fifty dollars or something like nominal, right? So I don't know. It's it's not, it's not eight times five hundred for the in that example. It's and that's why I need to kind of go compare Rumsens, which Bill Brooks believes is a much. You know, better from that perspective, there's more, then that's what I mean, having more teeth to the penalties uh for taking down trees.
Well, the other question is, what's the end result in terms of the cost to the developer, the homeowner? You know, if Bill Brooks's fees are passed through, I mean, they might be spending a lot more than is being invested in trees. I I don't know the answer, I'm just throwing it out there. We should be looking at the total cost and where that money's going.
Agreed.
Another point I'm wondering about is driveways. I don't know if that would be part of our I um part of, again, our purview. Um, because I've been seeing several houses now with like a gravel driveway versus asphalt. Versus something that might be a little more environmentally friendly, so uh that just might be another area to look with, to look at.
Uh, is there a third option, Dave, or are you saying that gravel is more friendly than asphalt?
No, I'm not sure because I think gravel while, you know, would allow percolation, you know, uh obviously more percolation to asphalt. It's also messy a- and um, you know, the gravel does end up kind of going into the road, et cetera, so there's that aspect. So I think what I'm suggesting is just examine that idea because I'm not sure what are some alternative, what are some other alternatives? But just, uh, I'm just wondering, is that something we should examine? Because I know runoff, water runoff is such an issue here, so that could be one way of kind of mitigating um storm drain uh or stormwater runoff.
Uh, let me, let me use that to transition into something slightly different. So my my question related specifically to the subdivisions. What we're seeing by way of construction being built as a matter of right and where we think. We may need to tighten things up in order to see these houses conform to what we would expect. If they were basically not receiving any variances. Independent of that, I know that there is a renewed interest at the zoning board level to really get a a more broad discussion started. Uh, about other things and David, I think the driveway discussion is really a good one for that group. And um, you know, if that starts to come together, you know, maybe a member or two of the planning board would like to participate. In some brainstorming sessions in terms of other things that we may want to look at and tweak and fix and improve. Okay, anybody else on the subject? All right, Fred, uh, well, whatever, the the next topic is in person meetings. Uh, Sandy, has has anything been implemented with regard to the planning board at this moment or not?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So we've done nothing about in person meetings. Zoning Board and Council has already implemented changes in their policies.
Right.
And zoning board is going live as of August?
August fifth.
And council is already live, correct?
Correct.
So the question for the board tonight is whether or not anybody has a an objection to moving to live meetings starting in August.
I have a question about uh public participation. Wh- is there still a way for the public to participate remotely?
So, so Dave, I'll I'll answer that. Um, when this was asked, the questions were asked about this maybe four weeks ago. Uh, I told Teresa that um that what I really wanted was to find a way to maintain. The ability of the public to participate digitally in addition to having the benefit for the applicants to present in person. Uh, because I think that, you know, from my experience, not applicants, but the professionals for sure. Recognize the advantage of being in the same room, the opportunity to really communicate i- in a three dimensional way. Um, and so I think that they'll be pleased to get that. Um, there is a technology issue. Uh, there will also be an issue in terms of handling, you know, the fact that we're live and yet we've got people digitally. How do we get them to communicate? So there is not a resolution of that at the moment. But Teresa is well aware that 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 is what I want to see happen. Um, and I think if if you if you echo that, then, you know, I've got every reason to make sure that that stays on her agenda.
Hey, I I know the board of Ed is going um live now with their meetings and they made a statement saying there will not be any virtual at all. So once they're live, they're live for everybody, so you'll post notice and you can come to their meetings, but that's that. This is FYI.
Well, and at the moment, there is no uh technology that will permit us to do the hybrid. So that would be true, that is true of the zoning board. I believe that's true of the council, right, Betsy? There's no digital participation?
Well, there there is to a to a very limited extent. We've been streaming Facebook Live. Um, the public has the opportunity to watch the meetings, but as you know, downstairs in council chambers. It's really hard to, with all of those columns, it's really hard to get. Uh, a one hundred eighty degree perspective, but uh we have a camera set up. We stream it Facebook Live and then if a a resident has a question, they are emailing it to Teresa and then she'll read the question. But there's, there's no way like on Zoom to have a direct communication with the board or the council.
So so let me, let me say this, if we're having public comment, we could hear a question from a resident i- i- in the general comment. We could not have a comment from a resident to an application without the opportunity for that. Uh, witness to be cross examined. I mean, is that correct, Doug? I don't want to speak out of turn.
Yeah.
In fairness, you you would, you'd have to be able to have it. Participate in both ways with regard to an application. Um, I've only seen this. This model with a hybrid. In board of education meetings where they have, you know, in a sense, a media center. Their meeting. And then we'll take a live question while someone is, as counsel would be saying, live streaming and then participating. As far as a planning board hearing, where the witness had, where the where the witness, if they're giving testimonies, being sworn and subject to cross examination. I've not seen that model for planning boards or zoning boards of adjustment.
Yeah, I think what you really need is a fifty inch television monitor. You'd need to project the same way we're doing via Zoom or Facebook or whatever else. With the ability of the person that wants to participate digitally to be a face on that screen communicating with the room. Um, it's far beyond what we currently do, but once we did it, Betsy, we would essentially do it for everybody.
Um, would be available for anybody.
Right. Yeah, look.
There are some setups being uh designed, I know, for higher education, a Hydroflex is one that's being used. So Todd, you were right in picking up on some of the things. It comes with a big TV screen and a camera. And it's a system that you buy that enables. Um, the camera and the screen to communicate to like a different platform, Zoom platform, for instance. So it is available, but it comes at a cost, you know, so that and it would be like a one time cost to to rig the room in a sense. Like Doug said, uh, to make it like a media room. So it's possible, but that's something that the board, you know, that the uh town can look at for later on if they'd like to invest in that.
Well, if you want a nice flat screen in Fairhaven, all you need to do is go out there and junk that, you're sure of buying one. I mean that, actually, I picked up two during the last junk day, so it's personal joke. Um. So, you know, the the truth is that when you're as involved as 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 Betsy is, you know. That there's just so much on the agenda, it would focus on what we've got in front of us. The truth is that the borough is getting to as much of it as they can. So I I think this, there's been a lot of uh interest expressed in having this over time. Uh, and so I I think we just need to make sure that we keep it um i- in the discussion and and hopefully at some point we'll get there. Uh, clearly, we won't be there in notice.
There is an issue with the zoning board adjustment. Did they renotice? And did the governing body renotice by way of putting in a published notice to say from this time forward? We're going forward. I I've done that with one of the other boards that I represent. Where I counseled and said, look, I think it's important since we're transitioning, take the time, put in a new notice. In a sense for reverse of what we did in the past of going to remote, but now we're going live.
The council did.
Yeah.
They did, and I do believe zoning board did too. I think Mike Irene did that.
Yeah, yeah, we did, and Doug, I would ask you if you could work offline with Sandy. Uh, to put that together, um, she can share with you what we did for zoning board. And then be sure that we have it published in adequate time. There's plenty of time right now, but. You know, the the do it so that it's out there and and we're all tightened up for the next meeting.
Take care of that, Sandy, and I'll work on that.
Thanks very much. All right, so uh, no negative reaction to going public for the August meeting. Good. We don't need a motion or anything on that, do we? It's official?
Yeah.
Wow, live meeting. Okay. Um, anything else from the members of the board before we open to the public? No. Okay, I see that there are a number of attendees. If anybody is interested, I see one hand raised. Sandy, could you uh bring me forward, please?
I don't see her on there.
She's there, she's muted. Mrs. Blazer, if you could unmute.
Uh, I just have a question. I went out of the room. Whatever happened with thirty two Fisk? Did you? Carry it forward? Did you approve it? What did you do with it?
It was approved. And we just adopted the resolution this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the public have any questions, would like to make any comments with regard to any planning board matters? But asking you to raise your hand feature? Okay, seeing none. Anybody have anything in closing? John, I want to thank you for your expert guidance with regard to cannabis. I really did think that was good and really appreciate you coming on board and. Helping us understand that. That was terrific.
Welcome, happy to be here, thanks.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Next time we meet, it will be the end of summer. Enjoy what you've got.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah, everyone.
Good night.
Night, everyone.